I'm going to call this meeting to order. The time is 7:31. This is the regular council meeting for August 12th. Clerk, can you please do a roll call?
Mayor Potemblis.
I'm here.
Councilman Fleming.
Here.
Councilman Muir.
Here.
Councilor Rorback.
Here.
Councilman Soltis.
Here.
Councilor Wright.
Here.
Mayor Griffstein.
I'm here, thank you. The invocation and pledge of allegiance this evening will be led by Councilman Muir. I invite you to stand if you would like.
Thank you. As we start tonight's meeting, Lord give us the strength and wisdom to make the best choices for our community. There are some decisions that we will make tonight that have support from both sides, and may the seven of us use our common sense and try to do our very best for the city, for the future of the city. Thank you. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. First up this evening is approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions this evening?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'd like to make an addition to, like to make a motion add, in addition to the agenda under item 4B, I believe, it's a keep agreement with Deputy Chief of Police.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against say nope. Motion carries. Are there any other additions or deletions this evening? All right, seeing none, we will go to a meeting open to the public. So I'm going to open the public meeting now. If there's anyone who wishes to speak, I'll say you come to the podium, take three minutes. Seeing nobody wishing to speak.
I do have a written.
Oh, okay.
Okay, this is an email I received from Mr. Howland. Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Corey Howland, Sr. I'm a human trafficking survivor. I was forced to sell drugs against my will as a child. With God's help and grace, I escaped that horrific situation. In 2014, my former landlord became my boss and my mentor and offered me what I thought my opportunity of a lifetime, that was to work for his company, KMS Holding Company. I'm from a poor community of Pontiac, Michigan, and finding a mayor of a very affluent community like Birmingham, Michigan, who wants to mentor you is huge. His name is Stuart Sherman. For five years, Sherman lived up to all the expectations they thought he would, but then I was in a horrific car crash and rendered disabled with a traumatic brain injury and spinal cord injury. At first, I had full medical team caring for me, but then Mayor Sherman took and became my full-time caregiver and legal advisor. This is where things would take a horrible turn. Mayor Sherman started getting my signature on several documents. All my documents financially benefited him and allowed to rob me of all my disability money and my home. Why am I bringing this to your attention? Because the mayor used some of those fake documents in your court and robbed me of everything. Your chief of police has chosen to give this wealthy property owner in your community a pass. So the vulnerable adult abuse, money laundering, and bank fraud that done through your court system is being intentionally ignored. In January 2019, he tried to use a lease from 2013 for $825 a month to get rent money from social security. He failed for months, then created fake documents I didn't know he had me sign and brought them to your city court. That lease says 2017, the rent is $875, completely different documents. He was able to finally get the rent he couldn't get with the other lease from social security. Here's the problem with the 2017 lease is fake. Recently, I brought new evidence to your police department, and they refused to investigate the case. You're the mayor and city council. You are responsible for ensuring that, rather, you are richer, poor, people who come to Madison Heights are treated fairly, but especially the vulnerable. If your chief of police won't protect the vulnerable, you need to replace him. Thank you for listening, Corey Howland, Sr.
All right, thank you. Is there anything else? That was it? Okay, thank you. All right, so I'm going to close public comment and move on to the consent agenda. There's two items. One is from the Director of Public Services, the purchase of a portable construction sign, and the other is the regular meeting minutes from July 24th. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
Your Honor.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, support.
A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say nope. Motion carries, and we will move on to reports. This is the 11 Mile Streetscape Project for Main Street Placemaking Grant.
The 11 Mile Streetscape Plan was developed to enhance the pedestrian environment along the 11 Mile Road from Stevenson Highway to Lorenz. In the plan, greater detail was given to the portion of 11 Mile between Groveland and Lorenz called the focus area as a Phase 1. The plan found that a three-lane configuration of the roadway in this focus area would be significantly less expensive than a four-lane configuration with a landscaped median. Further, traffic analysis conducted found that the three-lane configuration throughout the 11 Mile area would reduce crashes without significant travel delays throughout the corridor. The city has recently been awarded a placemaking grant for $313,981.50 for this project and must sign an interlocal agreement with Oakland County to accept this grant. Staff recommends the following two motions. The city council approve the three-lane configuration of 11 Mile Streetscaping Project between John R. Lorenz and to authorize the city manager to sign the enclosed interlocal agreement between the City of Madison Heights and Oakland County accepting Oakland County Placemaking Grant for a total of $313,981.50, and also the city council approve a budget amendment to increase the DDA expenditures and revenue line items by $313,981.50.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of counsel?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that council approves the three-lane configuration for the 11 Mile Streetscape Project between John R. Lorenz and authorize city manager to include, I'm sorry, to authorize the city manager to sign the interlocal agreement between the City of Madison Heights and Oakland County accepting the Oakland County Placemaking Grant for a total of $313,981.50.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, there will support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Is it possible to support the grant but not the three-lane configuration? I mean, I can just vote no, and I don't know what the majority will do, but I have major concerns about the reduction. It's been a minute, but if I'm remembering correctly from the stats, it would nearly double the transit time when school lets out, which is a really tough cell that would clog that artery, and if there's ever any road construction in or around it, that double turns into triple or quadruple, and you'll have parents with elementary school-age kids sitting, you know, 15 minutes to drive a mile. So I do have some concerns about that, that I believe the traffic study highlighted. I would support the grant. I would prefer the four-lane configuration or some additional data around the three-lane before I would personally feel comfortable supporting it.
All right, thank you. Is there any other comments, questions?
Yeah, Your Honor, I'd like to make a comment about the three-lane configuration. I do know that I live right close to that, right off of 11 Mile, and so I drive that stretch of 11 Mile quite a bit. And I'd like to say that the police department has, you know, has had to deal with a bunch of close calls on 11 Mile in front of the high school, and I think having the three lanes there will alleviate part of that, the issue where people have to turn left from a four-lane road to a three-lane road, so they can utilize the left-hand turn lane to turn into the high school there and make it much more safer.
Thank you. Any other comments, discussion?
Your Honor, I think that, you know, when we looked at the streetscaping options that were kind of presented to us, the four-lane really did, like, the four smaller lanes that would reduce traffic speed and have that median visually was more appealing. Like, there's a lot of things I liked about it, but the information that we've received since really has convinced me that, like Mr. Fleming said, that the, that the safety of issue of having fewer lanes, people having crossed fewer lanes, there being a middle turn lane, different things like that. To me, the safety issue is the biggest part of this, and it really keeps, you know, those who are crossing either in vehicles, turning in vehicles, or having to cross the road in that area, this is a, seems to be a much lower crash rate and a safer option for our pedestrians, especially in the city. So that's what I have to say about that.
All right, thank you. Any other comments, discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Yeah, this is one of those topics that I was referring to. It's, I know the DDA has been around for a long time, trying to get some traction going with our I-75 construction and pandemic. It's made progress a little tough in the last few years. It's going to take a lot of work to get a true downtown district. We started some of that work with the zoning ordinances we changed a few months ago. How do I feel about the three-lane versus the four-lane? The four-lane, having narrow lanes seems pretty challenging to me. It'll certainly slow down traffic, but I'm wondering if it's going to cause more traffic accidents driving that close as I go through some of the streets in Royal Oak in my truck. I get a little nervous that I'm going to fit through some of the gaps that I have to go through there. So the three-lane worries me. As Mayor Potemblis mentioned, it's going to add about three minutes to the westbound traffic at the end of the day. Is that going to make parents a little bit more frustrated and less paying attention to the road? I don't know, but the three-lane also offers a left turn lane, which I know is the majority of the accidents that happen along that stretch of 11 Mile are angle-type accidents or rear-end. So people not paying attention to people that are turning left. So they're in a left turn lane, it should help with that. It certainly will slow down the traffic near the schools, which is one of the things. I've been interested in trying to get more traffic safety around our schools. It's cheaper to implement. I think it kind of leans towards the three-lane is probably the best next step for our DDA, and then we'll have to evaluate how successful that is in years to come, but I think I'm leaning that way, that it will be a little bit safer and cheaper, and let's kind of see where that goes. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments?
Your Honor, I just wanted to look very loud today. Just wanted a little bit of clarity on this. So looking at staff's recommendation, it sounds like that there would be significant cost savings for the three lanes, and I guess can you, like, elaborate on that a little bit more? I think the road, shrinking it to four lanes or having it be three or fours is crucial, particularly around the school. I mean, thinking back to the accidents we had on 12 Mile with folks, there were some ambiguous circumstances where folks maybe didn't cross what they were supposed to, but at the same time, it was four lanes, four wider lanes, but I guess can you elaborate on the significant or considerable cost savings comparably from the three to four lanes?
Yes, so the biggest reason why you're seeing a cost difference between a four-lane with a center landscaping median and reducing it to a three-lane is effectively both scenarios include on-street parking. So what we're trying to do is get additional parking onto 11 Mile to help make sure that we're still servicing all the commercial parcels along the corridor. If you have an existing four-lane roadway, what you're doing is you're shrinking those lanes, you're creating, with that existing roadway space, the center median, and then you're digging up more into the existing median, or right-of-way. So what you're, essentially, the major reason why you're seeing a significant cost difference is you're digging up a lot more existing right-of-way grass and putting in a lot more aggregate stone, like aggregate stone, curbing, et cetera. And you're also curbing the center median, so you're adding new curb to the center of the roadway. Whereas in a three-lane, what you're doing is you're using an existing four-lane and you're reducing those lanes, you're not hitting a center median, and a lot of the existing hard surface that you would need to put in for the four-lane for the on-street parking is already there because you just need less right-of-way to do it. So a three-lane, it's just a less intense road, so there's less roadway to create in that scenario, and that's the reason why you're seeing significant costs. Another thing is with the three-lane option, and these costs are factored into the engineer's estimate, there'll be some added curbing with the bumpouts on the intersections, but the cost compared to those bumpouts in a center median all the way down 11 Mile, big difference. So it's just, overall, it's a less expensive, less hard surface being put in that would do it.
And in terms of landscaping, and look, will it look similar to cities like Kalamazoo and Ferndale where, like, the lane is separated, but it's still there? Is that kind of what you're saying, where they have, like, the bike lane and the pedestrian lanes that are, like, where it used to be road, but they've converted into, like, two opposite bike lanes and?
We're not going to be, neither scenario proposes an on-the-road bike lane. What we're doing instead for both scenarios is we're adding a 10-foot-wide multi-use path on the north side of 10 Mile. So at least, in my opinion, I feel a lot more comfortable riding a bike or a skateboard, like, away from the roadway. So we won't have that, but I think what you're saying is that we're going to be using existing roadway already to accommodate that new on-street parking? Is that what you're kind of suggesting?
Yeah, essentially.
Yeah, yeah. Another counter, or like, another example of, like, center medians or landscaping medians would be, like, the Brooklands area off of Auburn Road. But again, it's a lot of curbing, it's a lot of landscaping that needs to be maintained in the center of a roadway. As a, putting on my DDA executive director hat, I see that being a challenge for plow trucks. I see it a challenge in keeping things alive in that center median, because it's only going to be anywhere as, I think it goes down as small as four feet, four to six feet. So, yeah, they had a challenge of having a lot of salt, trying to keep those landscaping plants alive, so a lot of those other considerations to be had.
All right, thank you. That was kind of just what I was curious, but you answered a lot of my questions with maintenance and how it would look in terms of layout. And the grant, it says that the grant will go further, that's just because of the nature of the process, it would be less from three to four, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I appreciate Councilman Fleming's comment on the safety. I'm wondering, though, did we check, since we got the study a few months ago, did we check with the, well, I guess two months ago, did we check with the PTAs at the two impacted Madison schools? Have we gotten any feedback from them or from the school board, or at minimum, our city school committee?
No, we haven't. Thus far, we've had our Traffic Safety Commission, or Committee, so we've had, we've heard from DPS, police and fire, and they indicated that they had no concerns with it, but we haven't engaged with Madison School at this point in time.
Your Honor, can we? I mean?
I'd love to, yeah, absolutely. In addition, when we were exploring originally the TAP, the TAP Grant, Transportation Alternatives Program, they also have a Safe Routes for School program. So with our, what was unique about this situation is on June 3rd, we got this plan back, and then the very following day, we had an opportunity to receive this grant. So it's been quite the hustle to get the grant application in by its deadline on June 18th. I think that this project serves as a great pilot for the downtown, and if successful, you have an opportunity where you have Madison Schools just outside the downtown, you have the City of Royal Oak that's conducted a similar study a couple of years ago, also indicating that they're interested in potential road downgrade from five lanes to three lanes. I see this as a great opportunity for Safe Routes to School program, project in the near future. Madison Schools would have to be a great partner in that.
Your Honor.
Yes.
Yeah, I think, I don't think it matters what I vote tonight, but if we had statements or documentation from the Madison District in some way that they were supportive, it would definitely flip my vote from a no to a yes. I think it's important that we involve them. I think the Madison School District in particular is often left out of our discussions, landfare just by nature of proximity to City Hall. I think it's a little bit of a benefit from that, and, you know, they may see the same things that we're talking about here, that it's safer, they might see the long-term vision, the enhancement of the DDA, and they might be okay with that, or they might be upset at, you know, doubling the traffic time. So, but I don't know what that is, and so, you know, for me, I would love, I would love to get their feedback. I don't know if it has to be discussed at a school board meeting or anything, but at minimum, we should be talking with the school board members, we should be talking with the PTA leaders, and just understanding their feedback, because they're the ones who will be predominantly impacted by this. And so it'd be great to get their advice. And I assume this was going to pass tonight with or without my yes vote, but I would like for us to reach out to the Madison School District as quickly as possible to be able to get their feedback.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Your Honor, couldn't we postpone this until the Madison School District has time to look at this and give their opinion?
Is there a deadline?
So we've, we've been approved for it. There isn't necessarily a deadline for us to sign the interlocal agreement. Without signing the interlocal agreement, we don't have access to the funds, which would also delay our time conducting the necessary surveys that we need to prepare our RFP and to get things rolling for an RFP process in the beginning of next year, to give us enough time to actually break ground next construction season. So that's, it would just be a matter of timing, but there isn't a set time in which Oakland County is going to, from my understanding, that has given us to accept or deny this
Okay, anyone else? Anything else? Okay, so the DDA has actually been around for over 25 years. It came about in 1997, and it's been a very, very slow process. I was also one of those people who didn't even know we had a downtown until, you know, 10 years or so ago. My concern with this is the safe streets part of it. There have been accidents and near misses on 11 Mile, and I think anything we can do to help make that a safer area for students, for parents, we need to do it, and if it means that we're doubling, which in this case, I believe, is an extra three or four minutes, is that correct?
It's approximately three minutes when school's in session at the end of the day.
Okay, so if we are increasing drive time by three minutes, I pick that over something that's going to endanger a child's life. So I will be voting yes on this. And if there is no other discussion, then all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say nope.
No.
All right, motion passes 6-1. Thank you. And then we have 4B, which is the keep agreement for our deputy chiefs.
We need to do the budget amendment also to.
Oh, apologies, that's right.
To increase expenditures and the revenues to the DDA.
That's right.
Both for $313,981.50.
Can I get the motion for that, please?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that we approve a budget amendment to increase the DDA expenditure line item 248-863-9870006 for the 11 Mile John R. Road improvements by $313,981.50, and to increase the DDA revenue line item 248-025-5881000, county grant to a total of $313,981.50.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor. Support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say nope. All right, motion carries, and now we will do 4B, the keep agreement for the deputy police chief. Is there a discussion? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the keep agreement?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the keep agreement for deputy chief.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Support.
A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say nope. Motion carries. And then we have, should be awards purchases. First up from the fire chief, the body armor, personal protective equipment.
Funds are allocated in the 2025 fiscal year budget to purchase the active shooter response personal protective equipment for the fire department. This new PPE is not just a replacement for the department's body armor vest at the end of their service life, but a crucial addition that will enhance the active shooter response safety and capabilities by including a ballistic helmet. The bid package was placed on the Michigan Intergovernmental Trade Network, also known as Mitten, on June 4th. On July 8th, bids were open and three vendors responded. Two of the vendors met all of their requirements outlined in the request for proposal, and one submitted a bid with alternate equipment that didn't meet the outlined bid package. Staff recommends that city council award the bid to the Lowest Qualified Bitter On-Duty Year LLC for the purchase of Armor Express Body Armor in the amount of $19,020.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of counsel?
Your Honor, so moved.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor. Your Honor, support.
All right, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Just that as a, as a parent and a human, I just pray to God that we never have to use these.
All right. Anyone else? All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say nope. Motion carries, and yes, I hope you never have to use that. Next up from the fire chief again is the EMS Plus program.
The city's capital improvement program includes $691,000 over the next four fiscal years to replace and upgrade numerous Stryker medical devices to assist our paramedics in providing medical services to the community. In addition, annually, the department budgets $16,000 for multiple service contracts with Stryker to provide preventative maintenance and repairs. Over the next four fiscal years, this amounts to $755,000 to be paid to Stryker for the same equipment. Stryker has introduced an EMS Plus program for municipalities to assist planning and budgeting for aging equipment, additional equipment needs, and latest technology, as well as increased cost for their equipment, services, batteries, maintenance, and repairs. Following a comprehensive evaluation, the department has determined that this new program, Stryker's EMS Plus, offers substantial financial and operational advantages to the city. This program will immediately replace 26 of the 29 devices used for emergency medical care, providing equipment standardization, updated safety features for injury prevention, technology upgrades, and eliminating multiple service plans. These elements result in significant cost savings, injury prevention, and operation benefits to the department. The EMS Plus program is a comprehensive four-year plan. It begins with an initial down payment in the first year, that would be fiscal year 2025, equal, and equal payments for the next three years. The initial payment matches the budgeted funds in the current fiscal year. The city will own all the equipment at the end of this four-year contract, so if we're not happy with it, we can discontinue. What's more, all the equipment will be covered by an additional three years of Stryker Pro-Care Service Plan, which is included in the package at no extra cost. This proactive approach is expected to save a minimum of $78,000 over the next four-year period, demonstrating the program's efficiency and long-term budget effects. Based on our evaluation and the significant benefits outlined, staff recommends that city council approve the Stryker four-year EMS Plus contract in the amount of $687,284.26.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of counsel?
Your Honor, so moved.
Is there support?
Your Honor, support.
A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Your Honor. Hey, chief, I got a quick question. So back in the day when I did it, like, Stryker was around, is that the only game in town, is Stryker still?
Yeah, they are by far the leading.
Did they monopolize it?
Yes. There was another company, but they're fading very quickly, so whenever you see a yellow type of device in EMS, that is a Stryker piece of equipment, and I don't think you would see anything else but that nowadays.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Your Honor.
Yes.
The city manager, Marjorie, has been saying that after four years, we can dis-
City manager Marsh has been saying that after four years, we can discontinue, but we own the equipment after four years, so it's.
Yes, they originally came out with a plan that was more like a lease program, but when you, one of the questions I ask is what if another recession hits and we can no longer make this payment, and they would come take the equipment. So, they rethought through that process, and this is actually just a way to upgrade your equipment, and at the end of the four years, we would actually own it, so if something happened and we needed to stop on participating, we could, or we could continue on.
And the useful life is probably a little more than four years, maybe not much, but.
Seven to eight years. It depends on which device, but seven to eight years.
I mean, one of the critical factors too is that technology. So, if you keep a piece of equipment long-term, something else better has come out.
There's a Michigan company too, which is, just stole my words, sorry.
Well, and just, could you, I didn't really clarify this in the report, but could you just kind of talk about the pieces of equipment that we're talking about? So, you weren't on council at the time, but Chief actually brought in the compression equipment and the lift carts and that kind of thing.
Yeah, I'll bring Captain Gilson up, because he's the one that uses the device in the field, so he would know better what, what we can expect from this new, new equipment.
Good evening. So, a couple of the devices we have are fairly status quo, small minor technology improvements. Those three devices that remain changed on the lighter side are the power load mechanism for our stretchers. There hasn't been a whole lot of changes to that, other than some battery technology in it. We have, let me see, three of those that would be, three of those that would be replaced, replaced one last fiscal year. We're updating some AEDs in the administration's vehicles and the two reserve trucks that are BLS capable and they're reserve status. And the CPR devices are just a technology change, but they have reached their service life. And our, our equipment from our Stryker reps is pretty heavily used. The amount of runs our ambulances take, you know, per ambulance is pretty high in the region. The stretchers, we would be upgrading two of the four stretchers. We were able to upgrade two of them last year, so we've been able to see some of the benefits of these new stretchers. The big significant change for the stretchers is that they will lift 700 pounds unassisted, whereas the current models, the older versions we have, will lift 700 pounds, but you need to help it. So, that's the biggest change with our stretchers. There's some other things, the both ends of the stretchers collapse down smaller, so we can get it into tighter spaces, eliminating us having to carry the patient to a stretcher, getting them, you know, right next to it. It has a little headlight for traversing in the dark, which is kind of neat. The next item is a new, it would be a new piece of equipment for us. It's a laryngoscope for putting the tube down someone's throat when we need to breathe for them. Instead of just visualizing with our eyes, it has a small little LCD screen that we are able to actually see where we need to put that tube. We demoed that piece of equipment earlier in the year and had favorable, favorable experience with it. That would put that piece of equipment on all of our frontline trucks. Another big change is the stair chairs that we use to assist somebody coming down the stairs. We have what their original design chair, up until last year, was all they offered. It's only designed to go downstairs, you're not supposed to be able to go up of it upstairs. It has a track mechanism and things like that, so they come out with a powered chair, and what it can do is, it's able to navigate across flat ground, you know, using the battery, so we don't have to push and drag through carpet. Also, it can go up or downstairs. So, it can go into stair walls as narrow as 24 inches, and it can support up to 500 pounds. And this new battery model has a substantially wider seat for the larger patients, so they're not so tippy on it. So, that would get us three of those. And probably the biggest benefit we'll see is the new Life Pack monitors, which is what we use for our paramedic care. It has some Wi-Fi capabilities, so instead of using a cellular modem like our current monitors do, it'll be able to utilize the Wi-Fi that is in our vehicles now. So, we'll be able to get rid of five data plans and not have to purchase new modems with this monitor, so that's helpful. We're able to see the EKG that we're trying to take live on the screen, so instead of repeating EKGs until we get one that looks the way we need it to for care, we can kind of wait till it cleans up and then capture it. It has some medication timers built into the monitor, so if we have to give a medication every three to five minutes, we can mark that we did so on the monitor, and it'll remind us, hey, those three, four, or five minutes is up. So, a little more intuitive, a little more helpful to keep our care consistent. It gives us some more capability, it allows us to take some other pictures of the heart that our current monitors can't do, so a little more care to try to catch some other types of heart attacks that we cannot do currently. It's a much larger screen, we're able to see a lot more of the health data all at one time, instead of having to switch in between different modes. So, a little more user-friendly. And I think the biggest benefit to these monitors are, when we have that Lucas device going and doing CPR for that patient, this new monitor has the ability to detect if a shock is needed during those compressions. Whereas now, we have to pause the compressions, take a look with our own eyes and see, is this a rhythm, rhythm that we can shock for the patient? Whereas this new monitor can pick it up during it and have, you know, on CPR as needed. So, those are the big features we'll see with the equipment upgrading with this program.
Thank you. Were there any other questions?
So. One more thing, this is important, because this is brought up in prior conversations about getting more AEDs out in the field. We are now given a 40% discount on Stryker equipment because we're part of this program, which we can offer to business owners, to offer, just to get that incentive to buy an AED for their, for their businesses. So, we're going to be rolling out now a community outreach for AED purchases for business and /or even at home, if you wanted to, but there now, you can use our discounts, will help a lot. They'll be the cheapest AED they can buy, so that's another benefit.
Thank you.
I just had maybe one or two more questions. I know, it's awesome that, it sounds like we'd be upgrading our equipment and helping you guys out with day-to-day work of it and saving money along the way. One, what will we do with that cost savings? And I know before we talked about the deputy chief police, is any of that all worked in? Will it stay in the fire budget?
So, no, 100%. So, in the budget year that you're in today, that council has already approved, there's $184,000 for equipment and the service contracts, and the first year of this agreement will be $184,000. So, next year will be $167,761, and that's what we'll budget for next year. So, even though we talked that it's going to be cheaper over the four years, that's not direct budget savings that you're seeing, because it's taking all of the budget this year, and then we'll just budget the same. It just, we don't have to budget for the replacement equipment over the next three years. Well, yeah, three years.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions, comments? All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries, congratulations. And then, from the director of public services, the scheduled replacement of vehicle number 119.
The fiscal year 25 budget includes funding for the replacement of the animal control van. This existing animal control van has reached the point of imminent failure requiring replacement. Given our inability to source a new van that matches our needs, staff has evaluated a variety of options and determined that the most logical solution is to replace this van with one of our water and sewer service vans, which are in bitter shape, both physically and mechanically. Replacing the water and sewer van, the water and sewer coordinator has determined that his department could use a mid-sized pickup truck. Staff has been notified by our Ford dealer that they have the availability of a Ford Maverick, which fits these criteria. It also falls within the current budget amount for the animal control van. Therefore, several things need to take place. The water and sewer needs to essentially sell the van to the general fund for the depreciated cost of $2,308.09. Therefore, we would be transferring the amount from the general fund to the water and sewer fund, and council would need to approve that. We would also need to approve a budget amendment in the water and sewer fund for $31,832 to account 592-901-985. This would replace, this would cover the $30,332 price of the truck, plus a $1,500 for safety lighting and equipment, and then we actually need to approve the purchase of that Ford truck from Leghammer Ford of Owasso in the amount of $30,332 from the My Deal Vehicle Purchasing Program.
Okay, so, sorry, how many motions is that, then?
Actually, three.
Three, okay. So, can I get a motion for the first one, please?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to sell van 461 from the water and sewer fund to the general fund for its fully depreciated value of $2,308.09 by transferring this amount from account 101-301-9850000 to account 592-047-6266950.
All right, is there support? Your Honor. Yes. I'll support. Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. And then, motion number two.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion to approve a budget amendment of $31,832 to account 592-901-985000. This represents the $30,332 price of the truck, plus 1,000, 1,500 for safety lighting and other equipment.
All right, is there support?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Support.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. And the third one, Mr. Wright, want to take a shot?
Sure. To, Your Honor, I would like to make a motion to approve the purchase of one Ford Maverick as specified by Lunghammer Ford of Owasso in the amount of $30,332 through the My Deal Vehicle Purchasing Program.
All right, and is there support?
Your Honor. Support.
All right, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, just want to say, good job, Mr. Wright. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. Next up, also from the director of public services, the scheduled replacement of vehicle number 434.
The current budget includes funding for the scheduled replacement of vehicle 434, a 2007 Chevy Silverado two-wheel drive, funded through the water and sewer division. This truck serves as a motor pool support vehicle and is heavily used throughout the year. The existing vehicle is a poor condition analysis score and warrants replacement. As the vehicle is slightly over the budgeted amount, staff recommends that council consider two motions, to approve a budget amendment for $886 to account 592-901-985, and to approve the purchase of the Chevy Silverado work truck from Bringer Chevrolet of Grand Rapids in the amount of $36,886 through the My Deal Vehicle Purchasing Program.
All right, thank you. So, this is two motions. Can I get a motion for the first, please?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that we approve the budget amendment in the amount of $886 to account 592-901-985000.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Support.
All right, motion has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. And motion two.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that we approve the purchase of one Chevy Colorado work truck from Berger Chevrolet of Grand Rapids in the amount of $36,886.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Aye.
Yes.
Support.
All right, motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. And last up, from the city manager, the construction of the pickleball courts at Rosie's Park.
Utilizing the Oakland County Annual Construction Contract for Services and Rates, staff has worked with Norman Conrath Engineering and Frank Rewall &amp; Sons to design and propose the construction of eight pickleball courts at Rosie's Park for $379,004. As discussed at the July 8th council meeting, when council unanimously approved the acceptance of a $75,000 Parks and Recreation Grant from Oakland County specifically for these courts, the planned budget for this project was set at $351,000. The Southeast Michigan Pickleball Association, with whom the city has been in conversations with to program court events such as lessons, leagues, mixers, and tournaments, has generously offered a $12,000 grant to ensure this project's completion. This, coupled with the approved request from the Madison House Community Foundation to cover trees to be planted with the court for $16,000, covers the funding gap for this project. Therefore, we request that city council approve the construction agreement with Frank Rewall &amp; Sons under the Oakland County Annual Construction Contract to construct eight pickleball courts at Rosie's Park for an amount not to exceed $379,004.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that council approves the construction agreement with Frank Rewall &amp; Sons under the Oakland County Annual Contraction Contract for the construction of pickleball courts at Rosie's Park for an amount not to exceed $379,004.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Support.
All right, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I know that some people have thought that we were getting pickleball courts at the new Red Oaks Park from the Oakland County, and that's not true at all, so this is going to be the only site that we have pickleball out of all the city, and I'm looking forward to playing pickleball myself, too.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
So, this is another one of those items that I'm sure there's debates on both sides, but I think adding the pickleball courts to Rosie's gives the opportunity for the city to have some more summer events down on that, that south side of the city, instead of everything being at Civic Center Park all the time. I know there's been some concern over the vandalism going on at Rosie's. The police staff has taken increased steps to patrol that area, and I think for the first time in quite some time, we are fully staffed on the police department, and it's allowed them to, to, to be able to spend some more time policing in that park, and they've made several arrests already. We also are looking to create a park guardian program, and I just want to throw out that if there's anything I can do to assist with that, I'd be happy to, to help get the community involved in keeping our parks safe.
Thank you. Any other comments, discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries, and that concludes regular council meeting. I invite closing comments, starting with Councilman Neer.
Thank you, Your Honor. With close to tonight's meeting, I just wanted to say that most of the time, there's not a quick answer to these issues that we face as a city. I know people have been having power outage issues, and I wanted to let everyone know that we do hear you. And yes, it's true that we only had one formal meeting with DTE, and that was about four, five, five or six years ago. Our staff has continued to meet with DTE, and they're working on ways to mitigate these outages. I've talked to city manager Marsh to recap some of the recent conversations for me, and we are reviewing that action plan that DTE has. And we're going to try and make sure, hold them accountable for their commitments and get them working on those issues. As I mentioned, unfortunately, there's no quick answer to that problem, but we are, we are looking into it. This past couple of weeks, I was able to attend the Zoom meeting to discuss the Rosie's Park's issues, as well as the Oakland County Parks Design Meeting over at the Red Oaks Park, formerly known as Ambassador Park. Wish there'd been more attendance at those events, but we did have some input from them, so that's great. I also was able to attend the golf outing for the MHCC and the rec. department last Friday, and had a lot of fun harassing the golfers out there. Big kudos to Kimberly and Brooke and their teams for pulling that off, and Melissa hit some very good shots that.
Thank you for acknowledging that.
And Cheryl did, too, as a matter of fact, so they, they had a pretty good group there with Cheryl and Jenny and Mar, and she obviously has done this golf thing before, she was, she was pretty good, too. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bliss.
Yes, Your Honor, really quick tonight.
Yes, Your Honor, really quick tonight. Today would have been my dad's birthday, so I took a walk over in Civic Center Park before we started the meeting, hanging out by the memorial tree we planted for him, and right in view is the brand-new band shell, and that construction is really, really advanced. It is no longer just dirt. You can actually see the band shell taking shape, and that's incredibly exciting. You know, actually, in the same breath, there were like three different groups of kids playing basketball at the newly renovated basketball courts. And so, just seeing that difference and, you know, looking forward to the future with that band shell, I know my dad would have been really thrilled for the city, and I can't wait to cut the ribbon at Trail Tunes. Hopefully, we'll have power by then. All right, that's it, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Mr. Wright?
Yes. So, I'm excited to, first, thank you to the fire chief and officers for coming out and being here to answer our questions. Like, I think that when we talk about the importance of the equipment that our city staff has, it's like crucial, and, you know, I think it's important to take care of our seniors, but I selfishly think about myself if they need to come to my house, and I want to make sure that they have everything they need to help me. So, as a person with asthma, as a person who, you know, who knows if we'll need to ever use that equipment, but it's good to know that our folks have what they need to get the job done. So, I also want to talk about another event in September. September's going to be a great month for our city, like every month, but it's going to be better. We got the band shell. We also have Reverend in the Heights. So, on the eve of Dream Cruise, I want to look in the camera and invite everyone to come out to Reverend in the Heights. Bring your car, your classic car, bring your Fast and Furious car. Don't, no burnouts or anything. Don't do that. But, come on out. I know it's the same night as the fire station's open house, and we're going to have a lot of other community groups that are involved, you know, just to name a few. I think the friends at the library just asked to put up a table the other day, and it's going to be a great event. We're not going to have any bands, but you can go to Trail Tunes for bands. We'll have a DJ there, and we will have some prizes for the cars, and I think it's going to be just a fantastic community event, along with some awards. There's the Fire Chief's Choice Award, Mayor's Award, and a lot of fun things going on. So, if you have a classic car, I know we're going to have a lot of cool cars out there and a lot of cool stuff going on. I might not have been able to mention it before, but the National Guard is going to join us, and I believe they're going to bring a Hummer, which is going to be interesting. So, I guess it's a classic car to somebody, or it's a new cool car. But, come on out, come support this event, and sign up to also do the cooking competition if you make mean barbecue. That's it. Be kind.
Thank you. Mr. Burns, anything from the attorneys this night?
Just briefly, the other night, I had the chance to go out to the city Little League Championship game. It was a grudge match between Councilwoman Wright's team that he sponsors and the Sherman &amp; Sherman team he sponsored, and he got the bragging rights for the game, but, you know, who really won with those kids, because they have a great facility, a great group of volunteers, and most importantly, they had a lot of friends and family out there cheering them, and they all had a fun time. As a parent myself, I know it can be difficult to get your kids outside, to do things with all the tech that they have nowadays with the video games, movies, and such, but if you want to get your kids out, have a good time, get some exercise, enjoy the outdoors, you have a great Little League program, and I really recommend parents keep an eye on getting your kids involved with it.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Marsh?
No comment.
Mrs. Rotten?
I just want to thank all the residents that worked the election to help it go smoothly, and as well as my staff for administering a very well-run, smooth election. Thank you.
Thank you. Housework.
I also want to thank the clerk and her staff for the work. I was excited to go over and actually do early voting in person this year for the first time, and so smooth, so easy, and so convenient. I went on Friday before work and in and out. It was wonderful. So, I commend you all on all that work, and so, it's going to be even better next time. I also want to say, next time we convene here will be August 26, I believe, which, for me at least, will be the evening after the first day of school. So, I know we are all getting ready for, for many of us, they have young children heading back to class, and this can be an exciting, kind of scary, but fun time, but I just want to encourage everybody to, you know, plan ahead, think ahead about routes to school, make sure that your children are prepared for where to cross, when to cross, and how to follow all of those traffic rules, because we just want everybody to be safe and have the best first day possible. So, that's all I have to make, thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Fleming?
Yep. In September, we're also having a K-9 demonstration. It's the second annual K-9 demonstration from Harco, our police service dog, and it was a great event last year. I foresee it's going to be a great event this year. It's going to be taking place before Trail Tunes at Rosie's Park. So, if you can make it there before the Trail Tunes, you get to see some great work from Harco, and Harco's a really nice, he's a really great worker and great with kids and everything else like that. Also, the historical commission, we have the heritage rooms that are down in the basement of the city hall here, and we also need volunteers. That's one thing that we need. You do not have to be on the commission to volunteer to be working in the historical rooms. There are a lot of, there was actually a magazine that had an article on Jim Myers, who was at Georgia Animal Steel, and so, that was one of the articles recently about our heritage rooms. And we've also had people that went down there and took a lot of, we've had several articles from there. They have a classroom based on one of the first schools in our city that they've recreated, and a lot of other things that you can see from the history of our city itself. So, it's a really great place to learn about our history of our city, and also to see other things that have been in the past, such as, you know, old stoves, and things that you would just maybe see at Greenfield Village, but also, it's much closer than Greenfield Village, to be honest. So, yeah, so, we need volunteers, and if you want to volunteer, you just, you can let